Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Lagacey?
Here.
Commissioner Lethan?
Here.
And Commissioner Mason? All right. Okay. Commissioner Johnson, would you lead us in the pledge?
With pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item one, approval of the minutes for August 21st, 2018, and October 16th, 2018.
Through the chair?
Commissioner?
I move that we approve the minutes of August 21st and -- we'll have to do one at a time then, right?
You can do them all at once.
Can you?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Do more. All right. So to approve the minutes of August 21st, 2018, September 18th, 2018, and October 16th, 2018.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? Okay. Minutes are approved. Communications, Michael or actually?
Hi. I'm Darcy Smith. I'm the new community development director in San Bruno, so this is my first meeting, so thank you. It's on, I just have to talk really close. Hold on. I'm Darcy Smith. I'm the new community development director in the city. This is my first meeting, so thank you so much for having me tonight, and thank you to Michael and Mark for training me. I come to you from a slightly bigger town to the south, San Mateo, where I was there 15 years in the planning division as the zoning administrator, so I have a lot of experience in planning. I also worked a lot on code enforcement cases there and on really big development projects, mainly the Bay Meadows Plan, which is very similar to the Bay Hill Plan with a specific plan, a development agreement, an environmental impact report. And I also worked a lot on transit corridor projects in the city's rail corridor areas. And I also have a lot of experience on long-range planning, so I started my career at Dyad and Batia, who's preparing the Bay Hill specific plan, and then I went to the city of Campbell for three and a half years and 15 years at San Mateo. So I also lived in the city of San Bruno about 20 years ago, and I'm really excited to be back here working for the city and serving the public and helping contribute to the city of San Bruno's community development. So thank you so much, and I hope to help you and be a resource to you in any way and to the public.
Welcome.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Was there any other communications for us this evening? Good? Okay. Thank you. Welcome to San Bruno. It's nice to have you here.
Thank you.
Okay. Item three, selection of officers for select the new planning commission chair to replace Kevin Chase.
Yes, so at this time, we need a nomination for chair and vice chair, and this is to replace the resignation of Chair Chase to the commission.
Through the chair? I'd like to have just a little discussion about it.
Of course.
It's been a pleasure to serve on this commission for, I know, 25, 27 years that I've been here, and there are many of us who have served as chair at different times. And I would like to, and Linda, Commissioner, Sun is not here, but I'd like to have our new commissioners this past year consider that role. I think it's a really important role that we get to see leadership and get to see the experience of your knowledge, and I would hope that you would consider it. Linda's not here tonight, but certainly we have two commissioners here that I think are extremely knowledgeable and qualified, and I continue to learn from you both. And so I'd like to hear your thinking around it and hoping that you'd consider. I would be happy to make a nomination, however, I thought I wouldn't spring it on you so quickly.
(laughing). Any other commissioner?
Well, I have been thinking of nominating Linda, and you know what they say about people who aren't at the meeting, right?[294.83][294.83](laughing) They could volunteer for everything.
Yeah, it seems to happen that way here, doesn't it?[300.33][300.33](laughing). Commissioner, you have a comment?
Well, I won't be nominating myself. I don't know if I feel--
Go ahead.
If I feel -- no, for goodness sake.[310.33][310.33](laughing). I don't feel quite ready and confident enough to assume that role just yet.
Fair enough.
Okay, fair enough.
But I would like to relieve you of that burden pretty soon.
Absolutely.
But not just yet.
Okay.
And if it helps you at all, I came in November and became the chair in January and was quite surprised by that role, but you grow in those experiences.
Yes, you do.
And so I would say that if we are going to consider nominating Linda, that we should at least courtesy let her know that she's a candidate. I don't know if the decision has to be made this evening. I don't know the protocol processes, but if that's--
The bylaws require that you select a chair and a vice chair prior to the beginning of the next year, so I think you'd have additional time to do that.
Me too.
It's up to the pleasure of the commission.
We do have another meeting.
What is the commission's pleasure?
Did you have other nominations to entertain? We should definitely wait for it to see if she's willing to serve in that capacity.
Okay. And how about a vice chair? Volunteers?
I'll volunteer if you are not feeling up to it. I would appreciate that.
Okay. So we've got two -- I'm sorry? Oh, okay. She's on, you're on. Okay.
You have to be showing up your gnomes.
Is that a little better? Is that better now?
They're on. They're on.
So in that regard, we'll postpone that decision until our next meeting.
Okay. Duly noted.
Thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Could there be a memo or a call placed to Linda? To make her aware of it?
Yes. Are you formally?
Yeah. Let's go ahead and formally let her know that we are considering her as a chair, and if she can't make the next meeting, at least we can get a thumbs up or down from her as to whether she'll accept.
Okay.
And then we'll go ahead and do that the next time. Okay? Okay. Item four, this is public comments for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak to the commission on an item that is not on the agenda this evening? No one? Okay. Conflicts of interest, item five, anyone? Conflicts? Nope, no conflicts. Move on to item six, public hearings, 6A, 847 Mills Avenue. Staff report, please.
Sir?
To this project? There's a section for that coming up, just a second.
Good evening, everyone. I will be presenting the project 847 Mills Avenue, use permit 18022. The subject property is located on Mills Avenue on the west side of street between Euclid Avenue and East San Bruno Avenue and is zoned as an R1 district. The subject lot earlier measured 37, 3749 square feet with a single-family house and a one-car garage, and now measures 6,247 square feet as a result of a lot line adjustment that was approved in 2016. The property is currently developed with a 655-square-feet, one-story, single-family home consisting of two bedrooms, one bathroom, a living room, dining room, kitchen, and a one-car garage. The house will be reduced to a 604-square-feet to meet the accessory dwelling unit requirements. The home was constructed in 1900 and is located in the Lumita Park 1 subdivision. Immediately adjacent to the property are single-family dwellings. The applicant is now proposing to construct a new two-story, single-family home and convert the existing single-story residential unit to an accessory dwelling unit. A use permit is required in such kind of projects because of a new construction on individual infill lots, meaning a lot which have houses existing on both sides of the lot. The new home would have four bedrooms and three bathrooms in a 2,187-square-feet of habitable space. The proposed home would measure 2,625 gross square feet, including the two-car garage, and the proposed ADU would measure 604 square feet. The new dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit together account to 3,229 square feet gross floor area and a .55 floor area ratio. The proposal, including the new house and ADU, meets the height, setback, yard parking, lot coverage, impervious surface, and floor area requirements of the zoning district. In the October 11, 2018, architecture review meeting, the project was forwarded to the planning commission with some recommendations as follows. First, to eliminate the belly band from all the elevations, remove the extra trim around the front and rear windows, and provide taller landscaping features to negate any privacy concerns. The applicant has revised the plan since then and resubmitted the applications with all the recommendations from the architecture review committee. The project is categorically exempt from CQW, and there is an existing one-car garage and two accessory structures existing on the lot which will be removed. Public notices were mailed to owners of the property within 300 feet, and also advertisement was published in the San Mateo Daily Journal, and staff received one email after the staff report was prepared from a neighbor asking about the approval process for this project and also about the parking situation for the proposed one-family dwelling unit. Staff explained that the new house meets all the development standards and would have a two-car garage. The neighbor did not have any further comments on this. About the finishes, the proposed home would be finished in cement plaster with asphalt shingle roofing, which is similar to the roofs of the buildings in the neighborhood. The San Bruno residential guidelines encourage articulation in building planes in order to reduce the mass and relate to smaller adjacent buildings. Since this project is a two-story building, any articulation would be better for this project, and the proposal does have articulation in terms of there are windows on all the elevations which eliminates any blank walls. Then there is a porch in the front, and the sides would also be stepped back. And also the roofing of the proposed ADU would also match with the existing, with the proposed new residence. The applicant has also provided a landscape plan for the lot, including the list of plants and their estimated water usage, and it meets all the requirements. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve a use permit 18022 based on findings 1 through 6 and subject to conditions of approval 1 through 25. And this concludes my staff presentation, and I would be open to take any questions from the commission.
Thank you. Questions for staff? I do have one. Could you speak just for a moment on ADUs, because that's kind of a new thing for San Bruno, and there may be some folks here who are not familiar with what they are in that process.
Sure. So ADUs are accessory dwelling units. There are certain requirements to these ADUs wherein you can have the square footage requirement for it is 640 square feet, and they still have to abide by all the development regulations. There are three kinds of ADU units that can be proposed, which are attached, detached, and in the building envelope itself, but -- and they can also be proposed in R1 and R2 districts. However, they still have to fulfill all the development regulations. What an ADU can have is bedroom, a bathroom, a separate kitchen, and a living within the 640 square feet of the requirement. And generally, ADUs are administrative review. However, this project is a little different because for the San Bruno municipal code, an ADU requires legal single-family residence on a subject lot for approval. But when this project came in, and also there could not be two single-family dwellings on the same lot. So when this project came in, there was -- it came in as an ADU application and also a new dwelling unit, so an ADU could not be approved unless there was a primary dwelling unit to it, and that is why the direction was given from the previous director that this project come in as a complete package, as an ADU and a use permit. So that is why you see an ADU in planning commission today.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
All right. We'll open up the public comment, and the applicant can speak on his project.
Good evening. Mark Bookrally, architect. So whatever questions you guys have, I'd be happy to answer. We got pretty good direction from Mr. Smith on giving him the kind of facade that I think was coming from a recent subdivision, kind of a symmetrical front, and that's kind of what we ran with, and the owner's program, of course.
Through the chair?
Through the chair.
Couple of questions.
Yes.
I wanted to know if you had had any interaction or contact with the community neighbors in the area, considering that it's a small, very, very small house there, and now adding the home in the back, and I understand that it's all in compliance, but wanted to know what steps have you taken to have that contact with the community?
Yeah, honestly, we didn't, because it wasn't formally required, we didn't do any kind of outreach, figuring that we were going to, you know, through the notification process was going to happen.
Certainly. And did you receive any input or any comments from neighbors personally?
Not directly.
Okay, directly?
This was the first time I heard of an email or a phone call to planning. Yeah, so I hadn't heard anything other than that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? No? All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll open it up to the public, and we have Richard Dundo would like to speak. If you'd step to the podium, please.
Hello?
Excuse me one second. Before you start, we're going to limit comments to three minutes, so if you wouldn't mind, because we have a lot of people tonight.
Sure. I'm next door. I'm the next-door neighbor, and I welcome the project, and I'm here to speak about the project itself. It seems like it takes, and I've had previous experience, although with different people, with getting permits. Why does it take a year, in this case, almost two years, because of a development phase, you know, transferring a lot, for the planning commission to get this thing moving forward? It takes two months to build a house. You can see that I had a lot of war stories with -- I'd like for the new people here to review their own methods of getting permits moved ahead. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the public who'd like to speak on this project? Okay. We'll close the public comments in and bring it back to the commission. To the commission for comments, votes.
Well, I wanted to start by thanking the applicant through the chair.
Please.
By thanking the applicant and the architect for making the adjustments from the architectural review committee meeting. I think that the plans look wonderful. I think they're going to be in keeping with the neighborhood and will be an improvement to the neighborhood. My only experience with this project was at the architectural review committee meeting last month, and then it came to me, or it came before us tonight. So I'm not familiar with the process of what it took to get it here and the timeliness of it, but perhaps staff could just clarify what the process was, so we're all aware.
I'm sorry, can you please repeat the question again?
If I'm not mistaken, this gentleman expressed that you felt, he felt as though the process to get these permits was too long?
Yes.
Yes. And maybe you could tell us a little bit more about what this project had to go through and maybe a little bit about the length of time it took to do it and why?
Sure. I'll try my best to do it, because I've been on this project since two months now, but I would try to give you a basic timeline on what this project has gone. So first, the application came in for an accessory dwelling unit and a new residence. I believe that was in August of this year, and then it was found that there was no residential, like a primary dwelling unit on this property, and therefore it was communicated to the applicant that this process needs to go through a use permit first in order to get it approved. So a use permit process was initiated, and it was because of the complication with the ADU, like what goes first, whether it's the residential unit or the ADU, it was decided that this project goes as a whole package to the planning commission. So in October, it went to the architectural review committee meeting, and 300 feet notices were sent out for that project as well, and we did receive a few comments, one comment on the architecture review committee meeting as well, and then there were a few comments that were addressed, and then the project came to the planning commission this month. So since I've been working on this project, this project started in, I think, August of this year.
Thank you. So it sounds like about four months since it came to planning.
Yes. But I would also bring to your notice that there was also a lot line adjustment previously to this project, which was, the lot line adjustment was applied in the year of 2016 and approved in 2017. So that was the time when the substandard lot was converted into a standard lot, where the details are in the staff report.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's really helpful to know.
Okay. Any other comments from the public on this? No? Okay. Any commission questions, discussions, comments?
No, sir.
Motion?
Through the chair, I just have one comment on this project.
Please.
I just want to, in response to your question of it taking some time, as a planning commission, as a commission, we look at the project sometimes behind the scenes. There are various layers of it that have to be clarified, from the records department and all the way through the different, all the different departments, not only through our city, but also through our county, and we're not always aware of those components and how long it takes. So when it comes to us, it comes to us as a project, so just so you have that information. Not always do we have your answers, but there is, there are specifics that are sometimes beyond our control, so I wanted you to have that piece of information.
You understand me.
I do. I understand you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So do we have any motion?
I would like to make a motion to grant a use permit, application number UP-18-022.
The mic is off.
No, it's on.
No, now you just turned it off.[1421.03][1421.03](laughing). I swear, I wrote in the mic. For the new construction of a two-story, single-family dwelling on an individual infill lot, magic, and converting the existing family home to an accessory dwelling unit.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second.
Second?
Oh, so subject to the use--
Conditions of approval and final approval.
The condition of approval are on page, there we go, 1 through 25.
Very good.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The any ayes? No? The motion is approved, and there's a 10-day appeal period. Moving on. Item B, 240 San Marco Avenue. Staff report, please.
Good evening, commissioners. Michael Smith, planning department staff. So the project before you is 240 San Marco. The subject property is located on San Marco Avenue on the south side of the street between San Anselmo and San Antonio avenues. The request is for a use permit to allow construction of a 582-square-foot addition at the front of the existing second floor of the building, and that is specifically the building located at the front of the lot, because there are two buildings on this lot. If approved and constructed, the total living area of the home at the front of the lot would increase to 1,738 square feet, and it would be serviced with a one-car parking space located in a carport behind the building towards the center of the lot. Use permit is required for this project because it would exceed the maximum permitted floor area for the overall lot and for development of a substandard lot. And the lot is considered substandard because it's in the R2 district for which this is located. You need to have 2,900 square feet per dwelling unit, and this has less than that, so the director made a call that it was considered a substandard lot, and so that's why, it's also why it's before you today. The addition would add two bedrooms and two bathrooms at the existing second floor of the residence. The exterior of the addition would be clad in stucco that matches the existing building in finish and in color. The addition would be topped with a composition shingled hip roof, and as I said before, if it's approved and constructed, it would be 1,738 square feet, and it would be a four-bedroom, three-bath home. The second residence on the lot would remain unchanged. The architectural review committee reviewed this project at its October 2018 meeting and forwarded the project to the planning commission with a recommendation for approval with the following items to be addressed. One, provide a formal landscape and irrigation plan for the front yard. Two, add windows to the building's proposed right-side elevation to avoid a blank two-story wall. And three, provide existing floor plans and elevations for review purposes. The applicant has revised the plan set before you and added a landscape and irrigation plan for the front yard, which is shown on a small drawing on sheet A3. And then several windows have been added to the building's proposed southwest elevation, which is the right-side elevation in question that the architectural review committee wanted to have addressed. And then also existing floor plans and elevations have been provided for the project. So moving on to public comments, shortly before that ARC meeting, staff was contacted by the adjacent neighbor to the right of the subject property who expressed the following One, that the right-side yard is smaller than what is indicated on the plans, and that it's actually smaller than what is indicated on the plans. Two, to maintain his privacy, he requested that no windows be put on that right-side elevation, specifically at the second floor, because he was concerned about his privacy. He did come to the ARC meeting to express those same concerns. The ARC members were kind of trying to balance that with trying to put some detail on that elevation, so that different ideas were suggested, maybe they could be opaque or whatnot, but the project before you does have windows at the second floor, and that's something that the neighbor probably wouldn't be too happy with, but I don't see him here today. The other thing is regarding the side yard, I did take a site visit to the property, met with the property owners, and we did measure the side yards ourselves. So the side yard that you see on the plans before you of 3 feet 10 inches is accurate. It wasn't done with a site survey, but it was done with a measuring tape. And so what that means with a three-foot, 10-inch side yard on that right side of the building, the eve of that structure can encroach, but it still has to maintain a three-foot side setback from the actual side property line, and so that's why the drawings have been drawn as such, to kind of detail that and make that very clear to see that it's still meeting that requirement. That is also a building code requirement, because it would require that that whole assembly, the roofie, be one-hour fire-rated, because it's a safety issue. But we still have the issue of the wind-- But we still have the issue of the windows at the second floor, so I would like you guys to weigh in on that. Again, there's, several windows have been added. We've added a bathroom window towards the front of that right-side elevation, or I think it might also be called the southwest elevation. We've added some windows on the first floor, which are not an issue with the adjacent neighbor. There are two windows at the second floor towards the back of that elevation, which are bedroom windows, I believe. Or one's a closet window, one's a bedroom window. Those the neighbor might have some concern about. So, again, so we just want you to weigh in on that. But at this time, the staff is recommending approval of the project. We felt it's a good project. But if you wanted to address the neighbor's concerns by eliminating those windows, that is something we'd want you to weigh in on. And so we're recommending approval based on findings 1 through 6 in the staff report and conditions of approval 1 through 23. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Michael. All right. We'll open up the public comment. Is the applicant here? Would you step to the podium and give us a, oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question for staff.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
If you wouldn't mind. I just want to confirm that I understand the property correctly. So the problem is on the right, when facing the house, of course. So that would be this house in the lower right-hand corner on page 11 of the staff report?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And when I'm looking at the elevations, that's the new northwest, northeast? No, wait.
It's the new southwest elevation on sheet A5.
Okay. So the windows that are being questioned are the ones on the second floor?
Correct.
Okay. And with a separation of 3 feet 10 inches, so that the angle would be fairly steep, right?
Yes.
Because the ground floor windows are basically at a level with the neighboring house?
Yes.
And then the second floor ones have a steep angle to look down?
Not necessarily. Not the ones at the back, the new windows at the back of that elevation. Those ones have a lower sill. And so they have more of a view, so to speak, of the neighbor's adjacent property. The other two windows on the second floor that have been added have higher sills, and so those would be, you'd have to be a very tall person to see out of those windows.
Okay. And are, because of the narrow distance, there are no trees or other natural curtains to shield the view?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, a quick clarification through this chair. I was at the Architectural Review Committee meeting, and I do not recall a neighbor attending or expressing any concerns about the windows in person. As I recall, it was the applicant's concern about the neighbor's privacy? Or had he submitted an email or a letter?
Yes. So at the ARC meeting, I had been contacted that day of the meeting by the neighbor. He told me that he would not be able to attend that ARC meeting, but he told me what his concerns were. And so then I expressed those concerns to the ARC members, and we had kind of a discussion about it.
Through the chair.
Good.
Was there, I'll refer to my colleagues here. Was there a discussion about having obscure windows rather than no windows at all?
We had talked about raised sill heights, as I recall. I can go back.
That's fair enough.
What was the date of the meeting again? October 11?
11.
And despite the fact that I'm named, I was not on that ARC meeting?
I apologize.
No problem.
Yeah, we had discussed that we were not happy with an entire elevation of a home having no windows. And I think that the applicant can talk a little bit more about their recollection of that. I know that we had talked about having elevated sill heights, where we would be concerned about privacy. So maybe we could address that a little bit more once we've heard what the applicant has to say about that.
Hi, good evening. My name is William, and my wife Grace, and my little girl Camila. So I reached out to, after we met last 11, I reached out to Hussein, which is my neighbor next door, because he's been a little picky, just like, and I respect that, we respect that. And I asked him if there was anything that he may want to bring to the table. And his words were a little bit different, because he said, you know what, everything was twisted. I apologize. You can build three, four floors, I don't care. But I said, it's not that. You know, it was the fact that, you know, we want to make sure that you're okay with the windows. We actually reviewed the revised floor plan now, based on the recommendations that, you know, was presented at the last meeting on the 11. And trust me, we want to respect his privacy, just like he, we know. I did tell him about his cameras, that he had something, this is probably not related to this, but I did tell him about his cameras, if he can point out his cameras, not to my house, because I have my little girl who has a window downstairs, and that's the reason why we actually planted bamboos, which are tall now enough to cover those windows when we moved two years ago, because, you know, when my 21-year-old dresses, I had to actually block the windows because, for privacy, too. But I did reach out to my neighbor in front, which is Richard. I did reach out to my neighbor on the right, which is Hussein. I reached out to Roberto on the left side of the house, just to make sure that, you know, we're not trying to, you know, get anybody upset about the new construction. But this means a lot to us. You know, this is exciting, is an exciting project for us, because, and Michael Smith has been a wonderful, wonderful, you know, director and senior planner when it comes to my, you know, I shoot him with emails every night. I worked 12 hours, 14 hours a day, but he's always responding me back at the end of the day. And I want to thank him because he's been wonderful. And, you know, and hopefully, things work out with my neighbor, you know. We do want to, the windows on the new southwest elevation, those windows are not going to be clear. Those windows are going to be, obviously, not clear, so that, you know, there's privacy. It's just that it's so dark on that side, you know, that we wanted just to get some lighting, you know. And again, you know, the windows on the right side, towards the south side, those were recommended, and again, those are not going to be, you know. Yeah. And then, because the two windows on the, just below the roof, were, you know, it was just nothing there before, no windows. So that's why we decided to add those two windows, thanks to Kelly. Kelly, actually, he gave us the idea. And again, I actually spoke with Hussein, the neighbor on the right side, and he had no comments. And I actually invited him to come here if, but he said, again, you know, just built, I think everything was twisted, is what his comments were. And again, we're just excited. We have a lot of trees, you know, so, and he has a lot of trees, too. So, you know, and I think the concern he had about the 3-feet fence from the side of the wall of the house, we, you know, thanks to Michael, he came and actually did the remeasurement of that wall, and it was actually more than 3 feet. It was 3 feet 10 inches. So just wanted to clarify that, too, as well.
Any more questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? Anyone? Going, going, gone. Michael, I do have one question. On the southwest side, do we have any idea how far the adjacent house is on that easement? I mean, rough guess is fine. Is it like under 5 feet?
Sorry, say again.
Is it like 5 feet or under?
Well, if you include the 3 feet 10 inches on the subject.
No, no, just from the fence line to his house.
Oh, it's got to be about 5 or 6 feet.
I think that's more.
Oh, it's more?
Oh, your fence from, fence to the apartment?
To his house.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Through the chair?
Please.
I'm assuming that if the neighbor was not interested or motivated to come tonight, assuming the conversation that they had with him alleviated any concerns that he'd had before, I'm comfortable with the southwest, the southwest elevation. And I think that it is an attractive elevation, and so long as none of my fellow commissioners have any concerns about privacy, I would be okay, so long as we note that the glass is meant to be obscure on the plans. It sounds like that was the agreement that you had with your neighbor?
It may not have been.
Okay. Otherwise, I'd say just taking off that bottom section of window and just making it a little higher might help, but I'm comfortable with it as it is.
Through the chair. You know, looking at homes and, you know, obscure glasses are great for bathrooms, but when you actually have them in a room that you use, they're not always as inviting, and they don't always feel as good. So it's certainly probably a choice in your mind, but lifting them higher and having to clear glass gives you a much better, a much better opportunity for your home to look better presented, from my perspective. It's just, of course, it's my own, my personal opinion.
I agree with you. Yeah, it's preferable, I believe.
Okay. Commissioners? Nothing? Okay.
There are no.
If there's no comments or further questions?
I'm happy to make a.
Thank you.
I move that the Planning Commission approve use permit 18-024, based on the findings of facts 1 through 6, and subject to conditions of approvals 1 through 23.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. The motion passes, and there's a 10-day appeal period before you can do anything. You're welcome. Good luck. Okay.
Happy building.
Before we move, just can I just ask for one point of clarification?
Of course.
So there was no requirement for obscure glazing on that side?
Yes. There was a requirement, or no, I didn't, we didn't add a stipulation for that.
As long as the windows were higher, then. I'd have to take a look at this again, but the windows, I believe that you indicated, commiserant, that they had been elevated.
They had not, they have not been elevated. There were two that were made to be high, but I think the two that we're talking about are in that, in that back bedroom. Yes, on the right-hand side of the southwest elevation. They have not been raised. So it, as drawn, if the neighbor doesn't have concern with it, these are not obscured windows.
Then I keep my motion at stand, as it stands.
So let them still remain a little bit lower?
Yes.
And let them be?
Clear.
Clear.
Okay.
If the neighbor's comfortable with it, and you are too, then I am as well.
Thank you. Got that, Michael?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Item 7, city staff discussion.
Michael Smith, Planning Department staff. So at this time, we are going to continue the study session that we had in October Can everyone see that, the overhead? Okay. So, as I said, we're going to continue the discussions we had in October regarding the study session for small cell wireless facilities. In that first meeting, we really went over what the laws are, both at the federal level and at the state level regarding these facilities, and how they're coming into residential neighborhoods, mostly as a small cell, which is different than the macro cell facilities that the city has mostly received. And this is all, obviously, in response to a particular application that we had at 123 Elm. So today is really just, again, a study session. We are looking for, so the areas where we can regulate these is mostly in the area of time, place, and location. So we want to start to move towards developing regulations and potentially an ordinance that would do that. So we're going to be looking today at location preferences mostly, and what some other communities have done, and also aesthetic regulations, and what other communities have done as well. But we are not looking at any particular sites in the community of San Bruno right now. It is simply trying to get commission feedback on how they want to regulate how they look and where they're placed. So before we, and by the way, I gave everyone, they should have the hard copy of the presentation as well. And for those in the audience, the same thing that they have is the same thing that's on the screen up above. So before we, as we go into this, the first thing we want to do is figure out, okay, so what is a small cell? We went over this definition last time, but I think we just need to do it again, just so we're very clear. So a small cell is limited to a height of 50 feet or less. The antenna is no more than 3 cubic feet in volume. And the equipment associated with that cabinet is no more than 28 cubic feet in volume. And so that's what we have for what is considered a small cell pursuant to federal regulations. Secondly, we have shot clocks. And shot clocks are review periods or review times that we, that staff or the city has to review these in when they are submitted. So for small cells, we have a 60-day shot clock. And for a new, a new facility, small cell, we have a 90-day shot clock. So if they're going to go on an existing pole, whether it be a streetlight or utility pole, that would be subject to the 60-day shot clock. And if they were constructing a brand-new small cell wireless pole, that would be subject to the 90-day review period. So it's important to know that the shot clocks start the day the application is submitted to the city. And that they are told, or the shot clock stops when you respond within 30 days with a notice of incompleteness. So that's a letter that staff has to write, review it against all the guidelines that the city has, and mail that letter out within 30 days. And at that point, the 30-day shot clock, or, excuse me, the 60-day shot clock stops, or the 90-day, whichever it falls under, until the applicant res submits in response to that notice of incompleteness. Now, coming in January, that they have this new time period whereby if the city responds in 10 days when the application is submitted, then the shot clock will resubmit, or reset altogether. So you, whereas if you respond in 30 days, the clock stops, but then it starts from where it left off. If you respond in 10 days to these applications, then you get, it resets altogether. So you get, you get essentially more time, but you have to respond more quickly upfront. And the reason I wanted to just kind of go over that a little bit is just simply because whatever ordinance or legislation or guidelines that we come up with, we should all just be cognizant that staff will be pressed with trying to review these, no matter how complicated they are, within those timeframes. And then again, failure to grant or deny the application within these shot clock periods is basically considered a presumptive prohibition, and it entitles the applicant to expedited judicial review should they decide to pursue that. So. So most small cell wireless facilities consist of one antenna. That's a lot different from the macro sites, which usually have about three going in each, in three different sectors. So that's pointed in three different directions. These only have one. There's a number of radio units on the, which is considered part of the associated equipment, and there are usually about three radio units. And then there's also usually one small electrical disconnect box or switch. In some cases, a meter, and in some cases, a battery backup unit located on the pole or on the ground adjacent to the pole. And then there's also associated conduit, which is all the wires you see running up, running up the poles. The range of small cell facilities, so the range for how far they're propagating their signal is not consistent for everything because it depends on a lot of different aspects, such as the type of equipment that's being used, what the surrounding topography is, whether there's buildings or trees or other things. But on average, these systems have an approximate range of about 150 to 500 feet. And for comparison purposes, a macro cell site, which is what we've been mostly getting, have ranges of one or two miles on average. So this slide shows some examples, and this is also in your, the staff memo as well, of some of the location standards that staff has seen and some of the ordinances that other cities have adopted. So one said that they can be no closer than 250 feet from another facility, and that's done as a radius, a 250-foot radius. Another one said that shall not be located within 100 feet of the apron of a fire station. Small cells should not be located in front of storefront windows or primary walkways or primary entrances or exits or in such a way that it would impede delivery to the building. And they should not be located, well, they should try to be located at the intersecting, the shared property lines as opposed to right in front of people's houses. So these are other, and that's more of a preference sighting, but it's one that we came across. So when looking at setting up location standards for small cell sites, there are some particular questions that we think we should ask ourselves. And that is, are there particular locations of existing poles that would be problematic if they had antennas or associated equipment on them? Should additional poles or towers within the right-of-way be allowed at all? And that is something that we can control. We've talked about it internally. We feel like we don't necessarily have to allow new poles in the right-of-way. Another question, what are homeowners' primary concerns and can they be addressed through proper facility sighting? So, you know, from a homeowner's perspective, if they're having this in their communities, once we get beyond the RF radiation or frequencies, what are their concerns regarding having these in the neighborhood beyond that? On the overhead now is a map of all the, this is just a snapshot for, just for thought purposes. This is the neighborhood near the Caltrain Station in San Bruno, and this map shows all of the city-owned streetlights in that neighborhood. And so you can kind of see there that there's plenty of sighting locations for a small cell antenna in residential neighborhoods. This crosses over because running through this and almost right through the middle is both San Bruno Avenue and then Huntington Avenue. So there, San Bruno Avenue is much more commercial. But the idea is that there's, on the map, it'll show you that there's lots of locations to put them on streetlights. And once we overlay this, we're still looking for the information, but we'll try to provide a map similarly that shows where all the PG&E utility poles are, if we can find that information. And then that will even provide more locations for small cell facilities. So now I want to go a little bit into the aesthetic guidelines for small cell wireless facilities. So our regulations must be reasonable, and they must be no more stringent than those applied to other infrastructure. And they must be published in advance, which is what we're here to do today, is to try to work towards that. So the other thing is that the placement of the equipment on the antennas or on the poles, excuse me, is also dependent upon regulations by the CPUC, the Public Utilities Commission. So for one, they have their own separation requirements. So the first one, which is similar in most, with most building codes, which is it needs to be seven feet off the ground to provide that headroom. So it can't be any, the pole equipment can't be any closer than seven feet to the ground. They require that it be a minimum of four inches off the pole, so there's at least a four-inch gap. And it can't be any more than 12 inches. So that's the area we have to play with. So not more than 12, but not less than four. The equipment must be arranged on the pole in a manner that will preserve climbing space for those who service the actual power lines. And I think that we talked about that as well, and there's a zone on the poles that I think one of the carriers was telling us about, that they can't put equipment in that, and so that's what that's referring to. And then there's also the coaxial cable itself. It has restrictions on how much it can bend. Once it bends too far, it becomes less effective. So there's restrictions there as well. And so now on the overhead is a list of examples of the types of design and engineering standards that staff has reviewed in other city ordinances. So some prioritize poles which have tree foliage or to help camouflage the equipment itself. Some prioritize poles that are located near evergreen trees rather than deciduous trees. They like the pole equipment to face away from direct views of adjacent homes toward the street when there's no foliage present to actually hide the equipment. They want to seek consolidated equipment to reduce the visual clutter. They prefer mid-block locations as opposed to prominent corner locations for pole. So that's, again, these are part of what we can decide on here today, or we want your input on. In the case of electric streetlights, they want all the cables to run through the pole itself, so there's no, nothing exposed. And they want, sometimes they require that they use PG&E smart meters, so there's no, that reduces somewhat the visual clutter down at the bottom of the pole. And they limit them from not going on the more decorative streetlights. So if you have a neighborhood that has really nice old 1920s streetlights, don't want them on those. And so now we're going to talk some questions to consider when defining aesthetic criteria. Should multiple antennas be allowed on a facility? Where should the antenna be located? We're going to go through some designs here. Would you rather see the antenna at the top of the pole? Would you rather see it as a sidearm on the side of a pole? What size of antenna should be permitted? And that includes the diameter. Should the antenna be enclosed? Some you'll see are enclosed within a round cylinder. And how much, how much equipment should be permitted on the pole itself? What should the volume of that equipment be? And again, we have to be reasonable here, but that's something we can regulate. What color should the equipment be painted? Should the equipment, the accessory equipment be enclosed, similar to the antenna, to maybe give it a more sleek look, instead of seeing a bunch of different sized boxes kind of arranged up in a line? Should ground equipment be allowed? Some of these have backup power, and those are usually placed at ground level, and they're boxes. And so we're going to look, take a look at a few of those as well and what different communities are saying about that. And then should all the wiring be concealed? So now on the overhead are some different examples of antennas. So you can see in the first one, there's a more streamlined look at one on a pole. And that's the other thing we have to remember, is that we're not only designing for utility poles, which seems to be the ones that we have right now and for review, but we're also designing for ones that could potentially go on streetlights and even on signal lights as it's shown here. So in one of these examples on the far right. Again, this is how they have traditionally been done with the equipment and then the, a bayonet, as they call it, on the top of the pole. This is a sidearm design on the overhead, so this is lower mounted on the pole, so the pole's not going up as high, but it's going off to the side. And so the antenna is much lower, probably at an effective height. And then the other thing to consider with, when you're mounting it lower, is that it's getting now more into the view shed of people looking out their house windows. This is that same pole, but now with the extended top design, which is what they refer to as the bayonet, and then the equipment mounted lower. This one I came across, I thought it was probably one of the best-looking ones I've seen. It is not on a wooden pole, so it doesn't help us there, but the equipment is behind, there's an expanded view on the right-hand side there, and that's the accessory equipment that goes along with the antenna that's mounted at the top. And I thought that was one of the most flush-looking ones that I've seen. And that is because the equipment is somewhat wrapped, and so it doesn't add that much bulk to the pole. But again, that, I haven't seen it like that for a wooden pole. This is another aesthetic regulation that I saw. So the one on the left there is kind of a more traditional-looking small cell antenna. And then you can see the one on the right is much more sleek, and that was as a result of the design regulations. And so some don't like the, some try to remove this chunky transition between the pole itself and the antenna that's mounted at the very top of the pole, so that it has a more graceful transition. Some require a taper at that location. And this is also made more possible because this is a brand-new facility where they're building a brand-new pole, and so all the wiring that you see right here is not present over there. Now, this is about the ground-level mounted boxes. These are the backup power. So generally speaking, if one of these is not present, the antennas won't have backup power. So that's, it's just something to keep in mind. But some communities are allowing that, and what they're doing is they're wrapping them in artwork. And so we have that shown here on the right. And then this is the last slide, and this one is another way of hiding the equipment that's on the ground. So we have a fake trash can or a relay box, a relay mailbox. We have a bench, and those are all ways of hiding the equipment. And so that's really the last slide and the end of the presentation. And it's really just meant to kind of, for us to hear you guys and give us some feedback, like location-wise, what are some of the things that you guys are thinking of that you would want us to address? And then also aesthetic-wise, what are some of the directions and things that you guys would want us to address?
Well, this is certainly a creative process, and it's a learning process along the way. And most importantly is that it's a safe process for our community and for ourselves. That's an important piece, and the reassurance of educating our community and being sure that it's safe, right? So putting that aside now aesthetically, looking at those pieces, I don't want to minimize that, but that's an important factor. It's interesting, looking at the one, these don't have page numbers, but the one that looks like it's on the, on the streetlights, you know, it almost looks like a camera. It'll slow people down, right? Way back there, it's one of the very first ones. There it is. So they're on the right. If you take a look at that, it gives you the sense of a camera, and it almost feels like it's not, you see those and you see them in different places, the cameras. So that's, that's what it looks like to me. I think the others, now, is it leaning towards one size fits all kind of design looking, or is it based upon what's going to take place in the residential area versus the commercial area versus the business section?
Well, ideally, we would...
What's the thinking?
Ideally, we would come up with standards that could be applied more universally, as far as sighting locations. As far as design, so the tighter we make that, the more objective the standards will be, and it'll become a smoother process, so to speak, as opposed to staff going back and forth with applicants about our interpretation of a design standard, if you kind of got what I'm saying.
And are they effective? You know, is one design more effective than another one? From a point of the emissions of, and not from a safety point of view, it's a given to me that it's going to be safe, right? So given that, the others, are they, are they as effective? Is one more effective because it's taller, because it's in the wind area versus an area that, if you look up at Skyline, up in that area, Portillo Highlands, it's as windy as it comes, there's lots of trees, there's lots of PG&E components up there. So before making a decision on design, from my perspective, is, is one particular design more effective than another one?
Going back to the conversations we had on the previous project, so 123, and unfortunately, I have to rely upon the applicants in this case, but they say that generally the taller the antenna, the more it can propagate the signal, the signal from that antenna.
Right.
So the lower they make it, they may need to have more of them in a given area. But as far as other design factors between, you know, a more sleek-looking one or the one that's covered, I am not aware that any of them are better than any others. Because they're also being powered, and so they're low-power facilities. And the amount of power you provide to it also affects how much that signal can propagate.
And if they are, if the power is as good, then I would want it to be as minimal as possible and not a PG&E look. You know, that PG&E look is, I think, is historical, right? And many of the PG&E plants are trying to go underground as it is. And so I would say that keeping it away from any look like that, from my perspective, would be the first, a first choice. And I think that the one that you pointed out, that was a wraparound, that was on that green field. That's certainly a... That certainly just almost looks like a, you know, a sign that you'd see on a pole. It doesn't, and then the one that has this particular one on there, the one on the right, slick. So from my, I mean, I could look at every single one of these. It's clean, sleek, effective, doing its job, and not being intrusive to particularly our residents or anyone looking out of a window, for our residents particularly. And if you have to have boxes, boxes in itself, if you can camouflage them or can make them low-key and go away, would be a first choice rather than trying to make them decorative, unless it's a decorative area that brings some good quality attention to it. Sometimes you get something that's decorative and you have beautiful murals on it, but then if they're not kept up, and they start to peel and chip away. And I know that would be the responsibility of the applicant, of the vendor. The one with the trash can, as clever as that is, I'd be concerned that someone would go up there to put trash and then they'd say, "Oh, it's not trash." And they're frustrated with the trash they have in their hand and they leave the trash around it. Unless there's another trash can nearby it or something.
Yeah, the trash can one wouldn't work in some settings, some, because generally, it's the commercial areas, like a downtown that would have a trash can like that and not a residential neighborhood. So that's probably an area or neighborhood-specific kind of a design.
The mailbox is a really clever thing because people should sort of leave those alone in their own way. The park bench, to me, I think it's also clever. I'm concerned with vandalism and more of spillage and people, you never know what can happen in those kinds of things. And I'm sure that they would be put together, they would be designed and made it safe and the strength would be incredible, I'm sure. We have been taking these on a one-by-one basis over the years. How long have we been doing them? Fifteen years, maybe? A long time, we've been taking them on one-by-one basis. We started off absolutely with the safety. We had our rooms filled with safety and discussions. And then along the way, trying to keep them away up into the mountain areas. Then we have those funny-looking trees that, I don't think, that was clever, but it was not effective, I don't think it was a good option. So I guess, to summarize, my point of view is truly, the standards are, I think, I'm glad it's going in that direction. I think it's incredibly important that we have some standards that people can depend upon and a community can look at those and say, "Okay." And then if they're not within that range, they can speak to that, they can call somebody on it. And then streamline, you know, and streamline. I think that we can certainly, really from my perspective, I can say, "I don't want this and I don't want this," and we'll do a process of elimination. And then look, what's the best scenario in certain situations? It's very different in the downtown, residential versus Skyline. And if it meant that, they would get a better range of service because it's tall. And if you can put those in certain places and it works and it's not intrusive to someone or their backyard, then I'd say that standard should not apply to that. Because what I wouldn't want is that we have standards and then it's not effective and then someone says, "But you have these standards that we actually put in place, that we look at, what is the best option for that area?" Based on, I don't want to be redented in all that, all the comments that I stated. Those are my comments.
Through the chair, can we get any more questions of staff and then open the public comment period?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Through the chair.
Please.
Just a couple of clarifying questions. I have plenty of questions for later, but I think, well, I have questions and I have feedback based on the packet that we were provided to review before the meeting. But really quickly, just to follow up, I'm curious, are the garbage can and mailbox usable or are they just, is it like a dummy?
No, they're not. Punctual, correct. They're concealing the equipment at the ground level.
That seems a little misleading.
So the only one that would be usable then would be the bench, sort of option?
Correct, the bench would be usable.
Okay. I'm not real excited about that.
Our goal was to provide you with a range of options and what some other cities have considered, but that by no means means it's the right fit for your city.
Yes, so let me clarify. Are we trying to, after having read San Mateo's guidelines, are we trying to kind of create a palette from which wireless providers may choose from based on the right application in the right location? Or are we trying to get really specific and say, "No telephone poles, only light fixtures?" I'm assuming in areas where there are, let's say, historic lamp posts and there's reception needed, we won't be able to use those decorative lamp posts. We might need to, let's say, add a new facility or utilize an existing phone pole. So are we trying to kind of create a variety, but with very specific parameters for the applicants to choose from? Or are we trying to, just like, literally just pick one design and go with it for the entirety of the city?
Sorry, there was another part to that too as well. You said, "I'll be trying to do that," or?
Are we trying to, let's say, for example, say, we need to have the option for the pole. We also need to have an option for a lamp pole. So do we need like a utility specification, a utility pole specifications plus lamp post specifications plus brand-new poles that they may put up independent? Do we need to have all of those options available and then we clarify what we will and will not accept in each of those instances? Or are we just going, picking one option and the whole city has to conform to that?
Well, it depends. So you did talk about the three different types that we're generally seeing in communities, which is the standalone pole, going onto an existing streetlight and going onto an existing utility pole.
Yes.
We have, if you decide that you don't want a standalone pole, then you could say that that's basically not an option and you would want your ordinance to address that. And so that pretty much takes that off the table. And then you're just left with the other two. The idea is that we need to have some place for them. And if you have enough of that infrastructure to say that we're not prohibiting you because we have all of these streetlights or we have all of these utility poles, then that should pass. I mean, it should stand up in court. But yes, you would need to come up with standards for which, any facility that you're willing to allow. So that if that facility, that type of facility is presented to staff, that we can look to our standards for that type.
Okay. The reason I ask is it seems that site by site, different applications might be more appropriate than others. And I don't know if it would benefit us to select just one type or maybe put in order of preference. And I believe that's what the city of San Mateo had done in theirs, more or less. Saying we prefer lamp posts, or the lamp posts was the number-one preference. Next preference would be, I don't recall, utility. And then the last preference would be putting in a new pole. And then they had specific regulations about the installations of each type. But I don't see how limiting us would be beneficial, with the exception of maybe making it simpler for staff.
If I can just clarify, most cities don't limit it to a specific type because it's very much driven by the carriers. And traditionally, they do prefer, and they prefer to go on existing PG&E utility poles. That's generally their preference. Then their second preference is if they can enter into agreements with cities for light poles, but sometimes that's possible and sometimes it's not. And then usually, the third preference is a new pole. And that does go through a city approval process because it's a new pole in our right-of-way typically. But I think most cities do consider the range of types.
Yes.
Because if not, then it could be seen as a limitation.
Okay, good.
And then each of the, each type has different standards that apply to it. Because obviously, it's a very, as you saw in the examples, a new pole is a very different type of design than a streetlight installation.
Right.
So we would propose standards for each of the types.
Excellent, I think that's wise and I'm in support of that. And just to, I have a number of different questions, but I'm not going to ask them all right now, I'm going to gather my thoughts. But one thing I did have to say is I'm certain that the public is going to be sharing their ideas and their feelings on this. However, I think that the number of people who are here, perhaps many of our residents aren't aware that we're having this conversation at all. And so I would be a proponent of trying to reach out to the larger community of San Bruno. And I know that that may gum up or slow down the process of trying to make decisions. But I think that because this is not just an isolated space, like, for example, like the Bay Hill. It's a large space, but it's isolated into its own area. This is going to be in people's neighborhoods, right outside their homes. And I really think that I'd feel most comfortable if we formally reached out to the larger community and asked if they'd like to join us in some sort of, like a town hall meeting or some sort of open forum where we can all collaborate together. Because I would really, I have my opinions about what I think is acceptable. Or at least, yeah, it's something that I would be more comfortable with. But I think that I'd really like to hear more from the community.
Yes, that would be the next step in the process. By all means, there will be more future hearings, meetings on this. This is just the second meeting. And we wanted to get it before you so you could have a sense of what we think that ordinance and the standards can include.
Great.
But the next step would be a public forum.
Excellent, that makes me very glad. How do we think we will do our outreach for that?
We're still working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair. I just have a request and recommendation for the process of going through these options. I recommend that we move away from the catalog-style presentation and start thinking in an organized fashion. I could see in the examples that were supplied with this staff report and the previous one, which were both excellent, thank you very much. There were examples of cities that I think do it in very interesting ways. Here are hierarchies of preferences for the various options. So you can't have a one-size-fits-all. There's too many conditions that are site-specific. But it does give guidance as to, for example, I believe it was the city of San Mateo that gives the location preferences and starts with commercial areas in right-of-way and ends with the least preferable being a single-family residential. So I think that's an important way to proceed because then you take care of some important options and then you can look at all the alternatives. The other item that we heard tonight is the question of power of a unit versus its reach, its range. And so if you limit the power of one particular facility, you know, through your standards, then that means that you will have to have them clustered closer together. And I would like to see some sort of, in the future, some sort of sense of what's the trade-off? How much closer do they have to be if you limit? I think there were three different power levels that were standard in the industry. How close does that mean if you limit, for example, if you decide that the most powerful are not allowed? How much clustering will you require in your new and existing sites?
We don't have the answer to that, but we'll look into that.
No, I didn't expect you to.
So at this time, can we look at the new poles? The option for new? No, that's, I don't need the graphic. I'm just, can we just, at this point, say, "We don't want new poles" and be able to revisit that later? Or once we do this, we're stuck? Where are we at with that, Mark?
We can look into that, yeah, and provide that direction. I think the question would be, we would, the test would be then, are we accommodating the service that's required? So you saw the slide with streetlights, for example, that just showed that there is a range of options. And generally, the new poles is the last option. And that does require city approval if they're placed in the right-of-way, so. But whether most cities have banned them completely, we can look into that.
Mr. Chair, I would also suggest that it's a tool in our toolbox and we shouldn't ban ourselves from using it because there could be cases where a new pole would actually be preferable for other reasons.
No, I get that. But when I'm looking at the range on these things of 150 to 200 feet and when you think about the average city street here in San Bruno, you're talking two of them on every block, you know?
If I can clarify, the range can be up to 500 feet. And keep in mind that they are still trying to, they are trying to fill in gaps from the larger sites. So Commissioner Johnson referenced that these have been reviewed for 15 years. And I apologize that we don't have a list of all the city-approved facilities at this point. We're working on that. But as you know, having reviewed them, there are a lot that have been approved at the macro level. And those provide the greatest coverage. And these are just smaller facilities to fill in gaps in coverage. So generally, the burden is on the carrier to prove they need the coverage. And if they need the coverage, then there are options. But keep in mind that any new pole does go through a city process if it's placed in our right-of-way. And we also have other concerns when new poles are placed in the city right-of-way.
Okay. Shall we open it up to the public? Okay. So we're going to open it up to the public. You're going to have three minutes to speak. Anyone else want to speak? I need a speaker card. I mean, we want to hear from everybody, so. Okay. So please keep it to three minutes. Okay. Zindan Milli?
Hello, everyone. My name is Zidane Milli. I'm a senior at Capuchinno High School. On my way next year to Stanford University, this is my brother.
Exactly, Milli.
Thank you.
And I'm Rony Milli.
So we're here to discuss the topic, discuss further about the topic, about these cell towers that will be located in San Bruno. However, I want you all to be cautious on where you place these cell towers and hopefully, you don't place it in front of our homes or in our neighborhoods just because of, you know, the aesthetics that we're worried about and also the health. I don't understand, like, so previously at the other meetings, we discussed about, you know, with Verizon and how we don't want these cell towers. And then you guys came up with city council members and the mayor on how that you voted against it. But yet again, we're here to discuss it further. So I don't think, I don't know how clear we have to be about, like, whether we care about the aesthetics or the health. We just clearly don't want it. In the end, you can show us all these slides and like, you know, the slide presentation, all these pictures. But in the end, we honestly don't really care about it. We, as a public and citizens of San Bruno, will stand up for what we believe in because we are San Bruno, the city with the heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck at Stanford. You're welcome. Okay, Simon Mazzola, or Simone?
Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm going to cut to the chase. I was appalled by the report that the staff gave you. It has the entirely wrong conclusion. I commend the speaker before me, who understands the big picture. I don't know why the city staff doesn't. We don't want small-cell sites in our residential neighborhoods. We're not looking for you to come up with regulations to make them prettier or smaller. We don't want them. We don't want them because they cause cancer. We don't want them because they decrease our property values. We understand you have severe constraints under what you can decide. You can't decide things based on our concerns about cancer, but you can regulate based on aesthetics. And so what I thought the staff was going to present was a great set of new regulations to prevent... to prevent small cell sites from going into residential areas, and I am appalled that they've done the opposite. I keep hearing the telecom line from staff, and I'm disgusted by it. It seems like the staff is pushing an agenda for the telecom industry. I hope that you ignore that, and I hope you listen to the citizens who don't want small cell sites in their residential neighborhoods. You should demand from staff that they give you a realistic way to deny small cell sites in residential neighborhoods. The staff report, page two, quote, "Moving forward, the city's regulations must focus on how small cell site wireless facilities are located in residential districts, and not if small cell site wireless facilities are located in residential districts." That is so upside-down. You can regulate them only on aesthetics and only on safety concerns. And we need a good set of laws that allows you to do that. You need to demand better from your city staff. The Telecommunications Act was passed so that cellular voice antennas would be allowed to be put up. It was not passed so that telecoms can put small cell sites next to our homes so they can increase their profits by selling broadband. They are incompatible. The TCA does not allow for this, but everybody's scared. Everybody's getting the wrong advice. And this is the same staff that originally told you, you can't regulate this at all. They're wrong about that. This is the same staff that told you and the city commission that they should approve the Verizon Wireless Plan. They're wrong about that. I submitted a brief showing the cases where cities have said no to this in residential districts, and they've won in court. Let's not be afraid of the telecoms. Let's regulate this so that they are not put in our residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, you have a second? Thank you. Kesley?
Leslie.
Leslie, I'm sorry.
You're going to have this memorized before two.
No, it's okay. Leslie, I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you for starting a committee on this and a study. And after our last meeting about the study group and how it was to be conducted, we discussed issues about the information that's been given to the city council, the information that's been given to the Planning Commission, on how Verizon has brought this to your attention, that we need these 4G, 5G cell towers because there's a gap in coverage. We should be having a study to prove the lack of transparency that's been given to us by all these communication companies. We don't have a gap in coverage. We've tested it. They have their own independent study that is only for their benefit, not ours. We have these polls. These polls do not meet with the aesthetics. They are safety hazards. We've brought to the committees the information about our winds, that average 35 to 58 miles per hour. We have severe thunder and lightning storms in winter. We have dry lightning in summer. We have a 50-foot, minus-two-inch tower in a neighborhood that is subject to these weather conditions. We have power poles in our neighborhood that aren't even grounded, we found out just last week, and we turned this information into the Planning Commission. We do not want these towers. We've given you information from Monterey, from Petaluma, from throughout Marin County, through Southern California. They have proven that there is a way, and there is a product, that 5G can be placed 1,500 to 3,000 feet outside our neighborhoods. We are not, we want you to listen to the communities who have been succeeding. San Mateo has been having tremendous difficulties because they didn't have proper ordinances. I'd like us to concentrate on all those towns. Hillsborough, Mill Valley, Corte Madera, Ross, Petaluma, Santa Rosa's fighting it. San Jose is suing it, suing the FCC. We are involved in a lawsuit as well. Most importantly, we have brought to your attention how the fires in the Malibu Canyon started in 2007, or '08, excuse me. We have lived through Crestmore in 2009. We have seen the fires of 2017. In the last 14 days, we have been under masks because of the fires that they are now proving are started from these cell towers. We have got to take care of our small neighborhoods. And all the public needs, I thought we were going to be, we had hoped last, our meeting, that we were going to expand our coverage so that the entire city of San Bruno would be on notice, not 600 feet, not 300 feet, not 100 feet. We are terrified that we are going to end up like one of these other cities one day. We have the potentials. We have the winds, we have the bad telephone poles, and we have the lightning. And we have everything going against us. And so many of the other cities on the peninsula are the same way. Let's start the study where it belongs, taking these things out of our communities as an option and putting them out where they belong. And the Verizon company has their own video, and that has been given to you. The president, the CEO, excuse me, of Verizon says they can put them outside. We've had PG&E experts, engineers in our own community, tell the city council how everything has been, all of the easements are set up to set this out around us, not on top of us. Please, let's start where it hurts the most, inside our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. And I'll remember your name for next time. Okay.
Good evening. Ms. Johnson, thank you so much for your questions about safety. I wanted to bring to your attention a report that was published on November 1st of this year. The U.S. National Institute of Health National Toxicology Program concluded that there is clear evidence that male rats developed cancerous heart tumors from exposure to cellphone radio frequency radiation. This animal evidence, together with the extensive human evidence, coupled with the rising incidence of brain cancers in young people in the U.S., conclusively confirms that radio frequency radiation is a category-one human carcinogen. Cellphone radiation levels we all encounter every day significantly increase malignant, rare tumors of the brain and nerves, as well as cause damage to the heart and DNA. Were this any other modern agent, the appropriate regulatory agencies would be taking immediate action to reduce exposure. It is unconscionable that we continue to give millions the capacity to keep these cancer-increasing devices on their bodies and outside their homes all day or night. We can no longer assume any current or future wireless technology is safe. The NTP studies in experimental animals were designed to test the long-held assumption that radio frequency radiation at seemingly low non-thermal exposure intensities could not cause harmful health effects. This may have been part of the research that you did when you first started approving these. This is current. This is 20 days old. They failed the test. Cellphone radiation clearly caused cancer in the animals. Based on these and other peer-reviewed findings, if radio frequency radiation were a drug, it would have been pulled off the market. Peer-reviewed studies have found effects on brain development, memory, sleep, fertility, and other biologically important endpoints from oxidative stress, headaches, hearing, vision problems, especially in children. 236 scientists from 41 nations who have published peer-reviewed research on this issue are appealing. Until research tells us otherwise, we can no longer assume wireless devices are safe. The rollout of 5G small cells must be halted. Schools need to install wired internet networks and use cords to connect devices. Landlines should be maintained throughout communities. Practical solutions do exist, such as Ethernet and fiber-optic networks. Let's use them. Everyone needs to understand just how easy it is to use safe wired technologies, especially at home. We have a responsibility to living and future generations to take action on this issue now. While I know you can't make your decision based on health effects, I hope that this information just published will urge you to find whatever means necessary to deny these. I'm not sitting on that bench and frying up my insides by sitting there. I'm not standing near that garbage can. I don't want this anywhere near my children. Keep it away now!
Thank you.
This is not what I expected to be attending here today. I think it was greatly misunderstood of what the community desires, and we desire them to go away. I am here to request that you do a moratorium and stop it. It is dangerous for us. The telecommunications are for-profit companies. They're here to make money without any regard to our health or safety. It is unsafe for us to have them in our communities. It is unsafe for us to have them on poles. The fires that have been created have been created for what? For us to breathe this bad air? Have any of you thought about what we're breathing, other than contaminants? We are breathing human remains. That's what we're reading. And if you want us to put this killer in our neighborhoods, how dare you? How dare you misunderstand? How dare you look into San Mateo that has no ordinance and you want to adopt them here for us? Look at the communities that we have presented since June 21st. I came here for the first time to speak, and we said no. We had to file an appeal. We presented information to you. Look at it. Do not ignore us. We are not going to go away. We don't want to just look what is pretty and then be fried. We want you to do the moratorium and say, we're going to stop right here. We're going to take a good look at it. We're going to utilize every power within our means to stop it. They have no right. It's not a public utility. There is no gap in coverage. We have the right to opt-out, and all of us are opting out. We do not want it here. You need to listen to us. 44 other states, and we're part of it, that we're fighting, that we are in a lawsuit, and we're here to talk about aesthetics, and you are presenting to us a bench that is going to fry us? The children are going to go and sit on it, thinking, oh, I need to rest? Or an old lady walking her dog, oh, there's a bench for me, let me sit down? Really? That is appalling. It's unconscionable. We need to put a moratorium. We need to unmask the dishonesty and greed that they want to portray as a need. We don't have the need. They have the want for greed. We have the want to live a good, healthy, safe life in our communities. I live here for 32 years. I'd like to be able to live somewhere, and I'd have to run to the hospital because, you know, my brain is fried. Please, listen to us. You live here, too. It's not unsafe for only us, it's unsafe for you as well.
Thank you. Okay. And John Anderson?
I got it right.
That's one. But thank you for your comments.
I guess it pays to have a simple name. I got involved in this fairly late, and it's my belief that the FCC hasn't defined standards, actually, for these small cell towers. And the last meeting that we had here, there was a man who was disabled by that kind of radiation in his mid-30s. What are we doing about that? And listening to the tenor of this, it sounds like it's a done deal. I don't know why it slipped through in San Mateo, but I don't think you can include San Bruno under those assumptions. So I just wonder, who are you working for?
Okay. Is there any, that's all the speaker cards. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time? Please.
Good evening, Eleni, Planning Commission. My name is Vito Del Grazia. I'm almost a 50-year resident here in San Bruno. Little over 40 years ago, I used to be an engineer and estimator with PG&E when they actually took care of their equipment. A lot of those poles that they have, some of those poles are some 50 years old and older. And to put equipment on that, and the way they're maintaining their equipment, it's a little shoddy, you know? And that concerns me. But the thing that concerns me more than anything else is that you're hearing from the community how upset they are about having these things in our neighborhood. And it's the cell towers, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, all the utilities should be underground anyway. That would be the safest thing around. But it's always about money and cost, and what they don't look at is how much is it costing them keeping them above ground? Costing them a lot more between lawsuits and loss of life and everything else. That aside, these things are basically a marketing ploy for the 5G thing that these cell companies want to do. They don't care. They just want to do what they want to do. But radio frequency, you know, it's common knowledge, it travels in lines, okay? Straight lines, curved lines, whatever. It depends on the frequency that they're using. And if you're sitting on top of San Bruno Mountain, if you're up on Skyline, if you're down in higher elevations and you put a little bit more power, you can cover the area. You don't need one in every single block in order to do that. And as far as Verizon is concerned, and I told them this at the end of the meeting last time, once you get that pole and AT&amp;T wants to get on there, oh, yeah, well, we'll let you get on there, but there's a fee. And the next guy wants to get on there, yeah, there's a fee. And so they're making money, and that's all it's about. For them, it's money. But for us, you know, we have to look at our aesthetics, we have to look at our safety, and we have to look at our health. So we implore you to do the right thing. You know, if you want to put it on a ballot and have the community vote on it, that's the democratic way. But I can guarantee you here, if you ask everybody here to raise their hand how many people have Verizon, and how many people have drop calls, and how many people want to have this in their neighborhood, the show of hands will tell you what you want to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now's the time to talk. Anybody?
Can we take another three minutes?
Sure.
Thank you for the indulgence. There's a lot of information behind this. There's a lot of things that it takes to know. Telecoms want this because it makes them more money. We don't want it because we think it threatens our property values, our safety, and our health. And there are parts of San Bruno code that really work, and there are parts that may not work under the federal rules. And the federal rules are just designed to squash everybody but the telecoms. So at least if we play the right game, play the aesthetics game, because we can win that one. I think the San Bruno code in general needs to be amended to give better notification. And what I would recommend is that for residential permits, it be expanded from 300 feet to at least a full block, 600, 700 feet. I'll tell you why. Guessing, I think there's 10 to 12 houses on a normal long block. So if someone at the end of the block has a permit, and all that's going to reach is about six homes up, okay? I think that's not enough. But when it comes to non-residential uses, at least two blocks' worth of people around that permit need to be notified. Notifying 300 feet is ridiculously small. So that's one way you can effect change, to change those requirements for who's notified and when. and when. Another way that I would recommend that you structure this issue about what aesthetics will we regulate and how will we do that in a way that we believe is legal and keeps cell towers out of our residential neighborhoods, look for uncluttering. Set a standard. This is what San Bruno is looking for. We're trying to unclutter our skies. We're looking to eventually underground these utilities because those are neutral standards that can be upheld. They're not knocking any particular industry, but they set a standard of what we want for our residential neighborhoods. So the San Bruno code does do a pretty good job of saying that with respect to cellphone antennas and where they're located, go commercial first. Go industrial. Go mixed before you come to residential. So our codes are good on that. Will they withstand scrutiny? Maybe, maybe not. But where they will withstand scrutiny is on aesthetics. So come up with some codes that says it's too ugly in a residential neighborhood and we're just not going to allow it. Figure out with your legal counsel how to structure codes that keeps small cell sites out of our neighborhoods. What I believe to be a full-on capitulation of the staff in saying that this is going to happen is not something you can or should entertain. I think that you should find codes that prevent small cell sites from coming into residence because we can't get away from that. It's one thing to have a cell site on San Bruno Mountain or an industrial neighborhood or what have you. If you put it on a pole outside my bedroom window, I can't get away from that and I'm going to be blanketed in that radiation for the rest of the time I live there. So are my kids. That's why it really matters. We're not Luddites. We're not anti-technology. We're not, I'm not anti-cell at all. But I don't want something that's dangerous near my house or anybody else's house, near their kids, near a school. That's why it's important. Thank you.
Thank you. No worries. All right. Bring it back to the commission. Any comments?
If I may, through the chair, just to make a couple of quick updates for the benefit of the planning commission and also the members of the public, touching on just a couple of things that a few members of the public said. So first update is that, as some individuals may know, after the city council upheld the appeal of the neighbors, many of whom are here, Verizon did sue the city in federal court. That case is pending right now. We recently received service of it just a few days ago. And that lawsuit makes a number of allegations. One of the allegations is that the city council should not have upheld the appeal, of course. But then other allegations in the lawsuit attack the city's current ordinance and demonstrate, according to Verizon, that the city's current ordinance, rather than being too lenient, is too restrictive. So the city will be defending itself against those allegations in that lawsuit. And then the second update is, one of the speakers alluded to, is the city council did elect to join a national coalition of cities across the United States, including many of the cities that the neighbors have talked about, Monterey, Burlingame, Hillsborough, San Jose, Los Angeles and others, to sue the FCC in federal court over the new FCC rules. And in Michael's presentation, you saw what the effect of some of those FCC rules would be. They're going to be effective in January unless the litigation is successful. And those rules would establish the very short shot clocks, which require either an approval or disapproval within 60 days. And I think the carriers are then looking to, again, file lawsuits against any city that chooses to disapprove any of those facilities. So that, the city council did authorize participating in that lawsuit. The lawsuit has been filed and the city of San Bruno and many other cities across the United States are now challenging the FCC, which is where really the main battle is because it's the FCC regulations that have removed so much of the local authority. And then the last point has to do with some of the information presented to you about the aesthetic regulations and some of the speakers have talked about using those aesthetic regulations to, in essence, prohibit small cell sites in residential areas. And I think it's clear from all of the cities that have attempted to do that, that those cities will also be sued. If and when they do that, they already have been sued. There's no question that cities can regulate by aesthetics, but there's also very little question that that regulation cannot become an effective prohibition. And I think what you heard some of the speakers, well-intentioned, talking about are using aesthetic regulations such that they will become an effective prohibition. And that is the thing that is now going to be invalid under the FCC rules, which the city is doing its best to fight in federal court. So that's a bit of an update about what's been going on at the city and what the city council has been doing on behalf of the residents.
Thank you, Mark.
Through the chair. I would like to ask staff to confirm if my understanding and my fellow commissioners to confirm whether my understanding is correct. From all the very useful reports and presentations that we've had over three meetings, including the original one where the first projects were brought on, my understanding is that, as Mark just said, we cannot either directly or indirectly by gaming the rules, we cannot prevent, we cannot make it impossible for the various telecommunications companies to install in the right of, in the public right of way, the equipment they need to close the gaps that they can demonstrate exist. So I want everybody to understand, I think all my fellow commissioners, including the ones not present today, understood very well right from the get-go what the wish of the people present to represent their community was. We do get that. And I think neither staff who has done a bang-up job nor the commission want to run roughshod over that. And we're certainly not favoring those companies. We're here to favor the community, but because of the regulations that are being fought on another front, right now, the only tools we have are to implement some regulations, some guidelines for the location, the preferred locations, the ones that are least preferred, the spacing we can have, whether they can be in front of your window on the second floor or, you know. So yes, there are things that exist out there that we don't want to see here and we do have the power to restrict. So this process here is to make our best effort at something that will be as protective of our community, our community's interests with what's permitted right now while continuing to fight to get more control over this. Is that, is that fair to say? Because it makes me really sad when I see people who think they're being ignored. It's not our, it's not our goal nor our interest.
That we cannot, we don't have that power.
Sorry.
So I think if I may, just to follow up on your comment, I think there's a, the question is whether the city could do a number of things that have been suggested. And while the answer is the city could do a great many things, the advice that we have provided the city and that our outside council has provided the cities that she represents, many of the same cities that the members of the audience are alluding to, such as Burlingame or Hillsborough, is that those cities that do impose what amounts to effective prohibitions, either by moratorium or otherwise, will be sued. And so they are defending themselves now in court, usually in federal court. And so that's the current situation. And until the FCC rules are changed to provide more leverage and more ability for cities to truly regulate in the way that many of the residents would like, the cities that impose those prohibitions, either by moratorium or aesthetic or distance regulations that result in none of these facilities in any residential areas, will continue to be sued. And I think we'll continue to see that over the next period of time.
Through the chair. I have a question. Mark, I have a question for you. What's the other side of those that are not in alignment with this level of thinking? And then they indicate you're impeding in our cell service. Someone mentioned that, we show hands here, that there isn't anybody in San Bruno that doesn't have cell service. Well, I live in Portola Highlands and I have to take most of my calls before I go up the mountain. And when I go in my house, I have to stand in one spot. It's horrific, but you know, it is what it is. So there is poor service in various places. But what's the other side of that when we go after saying, you know, we're going to take this position? And then there are people who said, don't impede with my cell service. This is not okay. This is how I make my living. This is what I do. This is, you know, I want my children to have a cellphone. I, I'm a single parent. You know, what happens to those types of, you know, a them and us concept when it comes into an audience and then we're hearing this, you're like, okay.
So while not a legal question, I'll just indicate the information that the city has received is that the, there's a great deal of complexity surrounding the provision of cell service and the differences between cellular telephone service and data. And there is a lot of technology which I'm not qualified to present to the planning commission. A lot of that information was presented in earlier presentations and also by our outside council at the city council meeting. But the bottom line is that the FCC regulations are quickly moving away from any requirement that the cell carriers demonstrate that they have any gap in coverage. And the, as a result of that, testimony of residents saying, well, I have five bars of service. It's, I get plenty of data at my home, is not going to be something that cities can continue to consider. And so again, the FCC regulations are making it more and more difficult for cities to find ways to deny these sorts of applications in both residential and in other areas.
Correct. And along those lines, you know, in response to some of the comments that were made, absolutely we're not here wanting, you know, wanting to not support a quality life of living. I mean, at no time would I support that, lack of quality of life.
I have a question for staff to look at moving ahead. Now, the sites that we're looking at, they're sponsored by one provider at a time. Each of these antennas, is that correct? Like AT&amp;T or Verizon? We're looking at each one of these as an individual site, correct? What happens when we have multiple people that want to come into that zone? You know, let's say Verizon wants to go on this pole and AT&amp;T wants to come in 50 feet away on another pole.
So some cities have crafted standards that do have a minimum distance between different small cells. And some of the cities don't distinguish between the carriers.
So in other words, there can only be a cell here and then another one specifically.
Yeah, so some cities, as it was mentioned in the staff report, have a roughly 250-foot distance barrier. That's what other cities have used. And part of that logic is that the small cells can reach a distance of 500 feet. So the logic is, you know, pick a number. In this case, it was in the middle.
Right. But I guess my point is, maybe in our direction, looking ahead at this, we can look at limiting, like, multiple antennas on one site or grouping them together.
Yeah, so that would be a distance requirement between each small cell facility.
Yeah.
What our reconnaissance has shown in terms of multiple facilities on a pole is that typically the equipment can't, all the equipment required for more than one facility can't always fit on a pole. You saw the pictures of the equipment and often cities in their ordinances regulate the size of the, the maximum size of the equipment on each pole to avoid clutter, which we understand is maybe one of your interests, which you wish to craft your ordinance to regulate. So in that case, it would be more difficult to co-locate. And just as a matter of practice with the macro sites that you've reviewed over the years, sometimes when you've got a huge building, you can locate multiple facilities there, like for example, the walmart.com building, I believe, may have multiple carriers. That's a huge building. It's really tall and there's a big roof where all the equipment can be screened and put up there. A smaller building, for example, it's a lot more challenging to co-locate. So just visualize, you know, taking into consideration some of the experiences you've had working on the larger sites and what has been successful and what have been barriers to that over the years.
But I'm just thinking in regards to these folks' concerns, if we can say, we'll allow them every 500 feet, but there's only one carrier here and one here, rather than doubling them up and...
Correct. So some communities have not, have put a locational barrier regardless of the carrier. So...
Okay. I would like to see us pursue something in that direction at the very least. I mean, it's not an answer, but it's...
And if I may, Chair Biasadi, the other, yet another of the FCC rule constraints has to do with city regulations discriminating against different carriers that are under similar circumstances. So for example, the city could not say, we only want Verizon over here and AT&amp;T over here and T-Mobile over there. So the rules have to be consistent so that all carriers have the same opportunity to do whatever it is that the city is allowing.
Okay. Not yet, Leslie. I'll give you a moment, just hang on. Okay, anyone else? Leslie? You got two minutes.
When you look at any, most of the city planning and the commission meetings discussing the topic, there's always one gentleman who is there, and his name is Paul McGarvin. He's out of Petaluma, California, and he is an excellent consultant. He was the one who fought SB 649 that brought Governor Brown to veto that particular action. He also works with a man by the name of Rudy Monroe, who will work with cities and many times does not charge in giving out his ordinance expertise. And if those two individuals could be included into the study group as experts, because they are representing the cities, they're representing the general public. And they have also been, Paul has explained in numerous videos on all the city council meetings that you can get online at any time, that one pole is established in a neighborhood. And then every 250 feet, to make that 500-foot radius gap, there is, there is a pole every 250 feet. Now, when you bring in AT&amp;T, which they had stated in the Burlingame Planning Commission meeting, they said they will not share any of their poles. So you can have another group of poles, 250 feet. So it's not just one or two poles on a street. This is where Monterey, doing their study, came up with 9,292 poles in a, in an eight-square-mile area. That was for Verizon. Then you add AT&amp;T, Mobile Net, and it just goes on and on. So that map you showed with all those little telephone poles or whatever those dots were, that's nothing compared to what it's really going to look like. So it's just a maze. It's a web of nothing but radiation sites. And we've talked to people who, surveyor, who came through our neighborhood. We talked to an AT&amp;T man. And even they're afraid. They don't, they don't want to be part, the workers don't want to be part of this because they don't want to be damaged and get sick and have cancer.
Thank you, Leslie. No, that's it. No, that's it. That's it. We've already closed public comment, so we're going to have to stop there. Okay. All right. Is there anything else on this item from the commission?
Through the chair. One question that I had written down as I was reviewing the staff's packet was, and as I was reviewing the city of San Mateo's ordinance, San Mateo did not want any cell facilities in parks, near schools, or within an apron around fire department or emergency services. And I was curious why. And I was curious why that would not be potentially a good choice for us.
Yeah, we'll have to look into that. I'm not sure it was, well, I'm not sure it was an actual prohibition or just the preference. I think it was a concern to, for one, on the public facilities, to prevent interference with any other, you know, radio equipment, like the fire stations, for example. Making sure there was absolutely no potential for interference.
Okay. Okay, so it could theoretically, the RF frequency could get mixed up with emergency frequency and prevent...
Possibly, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
And by schools, I mean, I would say in general, there's, there's generally what we hear from schools, that there's a preference that they decided further away from them if possible, much like single-family homes, right? So, but some schools have entered into agreements to have macro sites on their facilities, as you may know. So it's...
Right.
It depends.
Right. And then as far as parks, I'm imagining it's to preserve the natural quality of parks.
Correct. So more aesthetically driven.
However...
Though sometimes those, these land in parks, for example, on light fixtures, for example. But also a factor is the equipment and where it's placed and the impact on how it limits the ability to use, potentially use the parkland.
Right. And even at like the perimeter of a park where there is natural screening with foliage or trees, it may be a good, a good location.
It, in theory, it limits the ability to use that, that site to its maximum potential, depending on where the equipment's placed and how it could interfere with use of the park or the school, for example.
Yeah. And you'd mentioned building, large buildings like YouTube or, I'm sorry, it was, no, it was Walmart that you'd mentioned. Have there been any discussions with them about...
Again, those are macro sites.
Yeah.
Now, they exist. We, whether they, private property owners who own buildings would entertain small cell placement on their building, that's something we, that's an unknown.
Right. And if I could just follow up on that, yet another, I, I feel like I'm talking about the FCCC, the FCC all the time. Yet, yet another prohibition is that cities cannot force carriers to locate their facilities on private property. So, and by the same token, cities are required to allow these facilities on utility poles that are owned by PG&E and, and other entities. So while the cities that you've seen can establish preferences and say, well, we'd like them on city poles first and then utility poles second, or vice versa, what the cities cannot do under current law is say, we want you to put them only on private property or only on schools or only in the hills away from everybody else.
Thank you.
Okay. Gentlemen brought up a point that I discussed off, after the last meeting, and that's in regards to notification. And when we were talking about it, I suggested possibly the cable network that we have, announcing these meetings or discussion groups or whatever we're doing regarding cell towers or microcell towers, put it out to the whole city. That way there is no, no, anyone feeling like they got left out. There's the opportunity for everybody to participate. I don't know what other means we have to communicate to everybody, but at least let's, let's put that one on the record this time.
I second that one. Yeah, we definitely support a wider notification.
Okay. Shall we wrap this up and move on to the next item?
We have more items.
Okay. Mary, anything else? Okay. Okay, the next item, selecting two members to represent the Planning Commission at the, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Thank you, folks, for participating. You know, it, that's what makes San Bruno great, is people coming to meetings and speaking their voice. And it gives us, we get to hear what you really want. So thank you all for coming.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
That's part of this company.
No, 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 not at all. We understand. Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry. Selecting two members to represent the Planning Commission on the new Recreation and Aquatic Center Advisory Committee.
If, that's exciting.
There's one.
If I may, just give you a little update.
Please.
My husband's going to kill me. Yeah, so this is exciting. This is the phase two of the new Recreation and Aquatic Center. And it's the creation of the schematic design and construction plan. So I think it is something that, that will be very interesting to the planning commissioners. And this advisory committee will only meet quarterly, so potentially just four meetings. And the goal is to both report back to the Planning Commission and keep them abreast of the project, but also to provide input. And you'll be working closely with two members of the city council, two members from the San Bruno Community Foundation, two members from the park, and two members from the Park and Recreation Commission. But it would just be quarterly, so up to four meetings next year. And I think what they're really looking for is, you know, someone who they think can represent the interests of both the Planning Commission and the community in terms of what would be important for this Recreation and Aquatic Center.
If you'll let me off the hook on being the chair.
Deal.
I would, I would like to volunteer.
Deal.
And, and you can talk to my husband if we...
Okay, you got my number, you can call me.
Okay.
I would be delighted to volunteer.
Mary, did you?
Oh, sorry, if you have an interest.
No, I, I, it's okay, too.
Very good. All right, all right. Two volunteer commissioners, herable.
Thank you so much. So the first meeting will be in January. But on that note, I have good news in that we don't have any items scheduled for the December 13th Architectural View Committee meeting. And so leading into that, I think there's a high likelihood, unless something happens in the next week or two, that the December 18th regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting won't be needed. But we'll certainly make a final determination closer to the date. Also, if we do have that meeting, we are still going to be short two planning commissioners. So we would want to know, if we were going to have that, we would still poll you as to whether you could make the meeting. I'm cognizant it's near the holidays, some of you may be traveling or have other family or friend or business commitments, so we would poll you before we finalize that meeting and event.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Also, important to note, the city council will be having the next study session on the Bay Hill specific plan, and that is on December 4th, Tuesday night. They are going to make the final selection of the preferred alternative. So I would invite you to look at the staff report, because I know you provide input for that. And if you have any comments that you would like staff to forward to the council in light of you reviewing those alternatives and providing input, we would welcome that and in advance of that December 4th meeting, where they will finalize that preferred alternative.
Very good. All right. So that covers everything? Planning Commission discussion. Anyone?
We've discussed a lot.
I guess we have. Mary, anything?
Yes, it's Thanksgiving week.
Ah, you beat me to it.
I want to give thanks.
Go ahead.
Thank you for the, the staff and the support we get. I'm sorry that you were accused of the, of things that I know are inaccurate and unfair. It's a que, a question of misunderstanding, I think. But seeing your work from up close, I, I am always so happy with the support you provide. Thank you.
I support that.
Thank you.
Me, too.
All right. Well, on behalf of the Planning Commission, and I'm going to say for the staff, I wish everybody at home who's looking, whatever camera we got, a happy Thanksgiving. To those who are here at the meeting, thank you for coming again, and happy Thanksgiving. Okay, thanks, Miriam. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody at home, happy holidays.
And one last comment, if you don't mind.
Please, go ahead.
I wanted to acknowledge Miriam, you know, she's always in that room, working away, making sure that we heard or heard. Sometimes someone says it's not on and it's on. She is managing that like a pilot. And I want to thank you, Miriam, because you rarely get acknowledged, and I don't know that anyone even knows that you, what you look like back there, but thank you for what you do. Huge thanks, especially during this time of the year.
All right. And if there's nothing else, we're adjourned.